Let the record show that we are minus one city commissioner, Mr. Steiner. First item up is the order of business, Mr. Kessel. Are there any changes to the order of business?
Commissioner President Decker, we would like to postpone item seven B, the mid-code agreement, until the next city commission meeting. They weren't able to return the document on a timely basis. So, that is the only change that we would recommend this evening.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Kessel on the order of business? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. President.
Motion to approve the changes in the order of business.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, will all vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Order of business is passed. Consent agenda, is there anything on the consent agenda that commissioners would like to discuss?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda with a second. Any further discussion or questions for staff on the consent agenda? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Consent agenda is approved. We have a couple of timetable agenda items, one at five and one at 5:05. We'll move on to the non-time table agenda. And the first thing up is administrative finance. And we have a chapter four alcohol beverage code amendment. City Attorney Murtha.
Mr. President, members of the commission, this is the second reading. The second reading for the amendment to the liquor license ordinance which adds a distillery license and further clarifies the definition for a microbrewery license. I believe. I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission may have, however, the language in this ordinance has not been changed since the last reading.
Okay. So we have on the agenda, and this is the second reading of 1654, so any questions from commissioners?
No. I would make a motion to approve second reading and final passage of ordinance number 1654.
We have a motion to approve 1654.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. 1654 is passed. Next up is a fee schedule amendment. Ms. Murtha.
Mr. President, members of the commission, this is a resolution relating to adding a fee to the fee schedule for the distillery license. There was no need to add a fee for the microbrewery license because it was already incorporated into the fee schedule. The fee for the distillery license for 2018 will be the same as the microbrewery license, which is $700.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Murtha. Any questions? This is resolution 11-2018?
I believe so, yes.
Mr. President, I would move to approve resolution number 11-2018.
We have a motion to approve 11-2018?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? We'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. 11-2018 is approved. Next up, we have Mr. Kessel with the JLG engagement contract for the downtown square.
Thank you, Commissioner President Decker. The item before you is an engagement contract. This contract is an extension of a previously established process that the city commission has gone through. One of your three goals is regarding downtown vitality, establishing a connection between the downtown and DSU, and exploring an event center. We have two items on the agenda that address this goal. The first one here is the JLG contract. As you know, they're taking the V3 visioning process that was concluded about three years ago and validating that downtown square that was provided by V3 Studios. You, as a commission, provided funds to the Dickinson Downtown Association for an executive director and to revise the downtown square and confirm that this is what the public is interested in. They have held one meeting already to obtain input, and they will be sharing with the public the results of the redesign shortly. So, JLG was selected using a request for proposal process, and Attorney Murtha will talk some details with regards to the contract itself.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. With regards to this contract, just to let you know that the version that you have before you is not the most current version of the contract. There has been some additional discussions with regards to some items. Some are minor, some are a little bit more than minor. However, we have consensus with the architects on the language. And I'll walk you through some of the examples, just so that you're aware, but staff would be recommending approval subject to final legal review to allow us the opportunity to finalize the language. For example, under 9.7, there is some termination fees that would apply, that the city would be responsible for paying if the contract was terminated under the situations that were described in that section we discussed, and having them, having those types of fees removed, so that there would not be these additional termination fees. And it's my understanding that they are amenable to that change. There's also some additional, again, minor changes that address the collaborative effort as the, with the downtown association as the fiduciary agent for payments, and some notice provisions that will be modified to reflect that. So those are really minor changes that reflect just the continuity of the communications between all the parties. Those are, that pretty much summarizes the changes that would be made and updates to this contract. I will say, just to reflect the discussions that we've had, that the contract itself has a lot of, a lot of general language that doesn't address the details, and there's a reason for that. And what was conveyed to me about the intent of using this type of agreement for this project is that the intent is that as you progress through the project stages, this document will be amended to reflect the details for those stages. So that was, that's why you may read and see in some of the provisions, "to be addressed later," "to be addressed later." So it is incomplete in the sense that there's a lot of things that are still needing to be addressed, but it is complete in the sense that what you need for right now is in there, and the intent is to use this model and add to it as you go along.
And do you feel comfortable with that format as well?
Yes.
Having gone through it?
Any other questions for Mr. Kessel or Mrs. Murtha? If not, I'd look for a motion.
So moved, I would move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
Have a motion to approve.
And if I can just clarify, that would be approving staff's recommendation subject to legal review.
Correct.
Thank you.
Exactly. So we have a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion or questions? We'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Contract is approved for the JLG engagement contract. Mr. Kessel, we have a liquor license, concession liquor license.
Thank you, Commissioner President Decker and commissioners. By the way, just in terms of closing on the last agenda items, it's worthy to note that JLG is charging $25,000 for that process, and they're donating another $25,000 for that process. So I just thought I'd point that out. Under the liquor license, you approved a new concession license. We have the applicant here today to take advantage of the new license class that you created. That classification is called concession liquor license. The Expedition League is the applicant, and Jason Watson is the local manager. They have paid their application fee. The background check has been cleared. The only thing you have to make a decision on this evening is the license fee. They have a credit balance right now, and we have three options that are before us. We can charge a full year fee. Now remember that the games will be played between May and August, but it would, it would be applicable to apply a full year fee if you desire. That full year fee is $550. Another option would be to apply a monthly rate for just the months that they plan to operate, which would be May, June, July, and August. So if you take 550 divided by 12, you come up with 4583 times four months, that's $183.32. The only concern with this option is it limits their operations through, from May, from now, from issuance until August. So if they wanted to hold any events after August, they would be unable to do so because the license would essentially expire. The option that we are recommending is the daily rate. This is the rate that we have used in the past when we have an applicant who applies mid-year. We take a daily amount. So if you take the rate for the remainder of the year, that would come up with about $368.44. So $550 divided by 365, you come up with $1.51 a day, times 244 days left in the year. This would allow operations to occur until the end of December. So if they do want to have an event outside of the parameters of their schedule, they could certainly do so. And as I said, it is the preferred option because this is how we've applied this in the past. So that fee would be 368.44 minus the 150 credit balance for a remainder fee of $218.44. That is our recommendation, and I stand before you to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Kessel, the full year fee doesn't preclude them from running the full year, right?
Absolutely not. If the full year fee would be, that would allow them, similar to the daily rate, to operate for the remainder of 2018.
Right. Can we just collect that January 1, or whenever we send out the bills, right?
Correct. In 2019, their rate will be $550.
As of January 1 of 2019.
I would say that with, you know, this being a new venture, I think there's a lot of excitement generated around it, and there's a lot of potential. I would be comfortable for this year for startup going with option C, and then going with the full fee next year, because then they have the ability to see how this year went, if they want to add any events or additional timeframe. There's a lot of unknowns going into this this year. I think any way that we can be supportive of it as a commission and as a community would work well.
Any issues accounting-wise, Mrs. Carlson? By going the daily rate?
No, Mr. President.
Well then, I would look for a motion on the rate.
I would make a motion to go with option C, the daily rate for the remainder of the year.
I would second that.
And with this motion, we'll also be approving the concession license.
With the contingency that they fulfill the financial balance.
And then one other question, Mr. Kessel. This concession liquor license now is open to other organizations also. If they would approach the city, say the BAC had an organization with, wanted to lease that facility and run concessions out of it.
That's correct, Commissioner President Decker. Yes, you created a license that is not singular in its operation, or application.
Okay. And it is a beer and wine only, just for the public to know.
Yeah.
So, okay. So we have a motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion or questions? We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The concession license is approved, and the rate, the daily rate. Okay, we'll move on to our reports. Mr. Kessel.
Thank you. Included in your packets, and I distributed a written copy for you this evening, is an RFQ for the event center that we've discussed. This RFQ was reviewed by the Dickinson Downtown Task Force, and one of the recommendations for this evening is that that group no longer be the board of recommendation for this project. The scope, as you've reviewed this, you'll notice that there's several different sites that are recommended that they review. Two out of the three are not in the downtown, so it's probably not appropriate for the downtown task force to provide you with recommendations ongoing. I think the city commission should deal with this issue probably directly, as opposed to using them as a board of recommendation. So within this RFQ, and this is, again, just a report this evening, we're not asking for any action. In fact, I'd like to hear your thoughts and recommendations in regards to changes to the document, on whether or not you want to move forward with it. This is not to engage someone to create an event center in our community. This RFQ is to hire a specialist who understands event center construction and operations, and will allow us, or they will provide us with their input and feedback regarding the items that are included in the document. So I want to be clear that this is not commit the city to, in any way, shape, or form, to construction of an event center. It is simply to engage a process to see if they think that a event center could be profitable in our community. And if so, at what size, in terms of how many seats, what types of events would need to be brought in, how many of those events would need to be brought in. They would do a full market validation with regards to potential of an event center in the city of Dickinson. There's three locations that are recommended. You can certainly revise that if you'd like to see more than three. One of them asks them to look at a downtown location. That's kind of where this genesis evolved. But it also includes a location on the DSU campus, and it also includes one around exit 59, kind of in that new hospital area somewhere, that intersection. Now certainly, like I mentioned before, if you want them to identify more than those three, we can revise this RFQ to do so. That is the first phase then, is the market validation and the three-location review. The intent is that they would provide a document then to the city commission for review. If at that point, you don't believe that a pursuit of the event center is appropriate, it ends there. If, based on your review of the information provided, it allows them to go on to phase two, which will then look at very specific site. So at that point, the idea is you will have selected a site for pursuit, and they'll look at a capital construction analysis. So how much land do they need? What's the building going to look like? How much is it going to cost? And then, also includes then, at the end of the day, a consultant selection criteria. So you have to have a method of rating the RFQ respondents. And I'm going to guess we're going to have between three and six firms that will be interested in applying for this job. And so we would list, or we have listed out those selection criteria as a way to determine which one floats to the surface. So there were a few recommendations from the downtown task force. Those are incorporated in the documents that you've been provided. And so I'd like to stand for any questions that you may have. The majority of the information is background, is to make sure that the RFQ firms have a good idea of what we desire and what we already have in the community in terms of like sites or like businesses. So with that, I'd stand for any questions that the commission may have.
Any questions for Mr. Kessel on the RFQ?
Mr. President, I have a few. Mr. Kessel, do we have an idea roughly of what cost would be for phase one?
I have not approached any of the, I have had firms approach me. I have not asked them for an estimate of cost. I think you would be safe in assuming a $20,000 to $35,000 cost for the project.
Thank you. I can just, you know, speak on my own thoughts on this, and, you know, I know Mr. Kessel has worked very hard, as well as the downtown task force, on putting this together and submitting this to us. However, I am reluctant to move forward with, even a feasibility study at this point, because Mr. Kessel will be leaving us. And I think this is definitely something that we should allow the new incoming city administrator a chance to be a part of this, and see what their vision is. And I think we have a lot on our plate coming up, and I'm not quite sure if we're ready for another big project such as this one.
Well, the date can be amended on here. That's why it's a report tonight.
Right.
I mean, we can push it back to this fall, or...
Right.
I guess, one of the, besides Mr. Kessel, who has always been, you know, a champion for the downtown, and part of that was an event center, that is one of the things that I've always mentioned too, as long as I've been on the commission, is I just feel there's a need. I mean, we miss out on so many opportunities statewide, and with us sitting on, is it 26 hotels? 28? Jason would know.
Right in that number.
Okay. A lot of hotels. We do need to start becoming that hub, that southwest hub, and an event center would allow that. And I'm open to, if we want to take, you know, some time, look this over and come back with, in two weeks or a month, we amend it, and maybe we say it's August 31st, or, you know, September 30th.
I would feel more comfortable in that only because there's quite a few transitions that are about to take place with Mr. Kessel leaving, with the election in June, you could be looking at a different commission working through this too. I know that city business doesn't shut down just because of those two. We go through that all the time, and life goes on. I would just feel more comfortable if this is something that we approached after the month of June, where we have a little more clarity.
That would be fine. I'm open to that.
I'm okay with that also.
So, we're not voting on anything tonight anyway, it's just a report.
Yep.
We can come back with recommendations, you know, next meeting, what amendments we want, once we look through this. You know, I even spoke with Ms. Kessel, I don't think we should limit ourselves to three spots.
I don't either.
I think that the RFQ should be five or six, or, you know, there might be something we don't even think of, you know?
You know, there might be some synergy with the county and the fairgrounds.
It could be.
Who knows? There's lots of different opportunities. I don't know.
Okay, if there's any more questions on the RFQ? Okay, we'll move along. We have a...
President Decker, if you do have thoughts, I'd really like to hear them in terms of revisions, other than date, that's clear. But if you have other items that you'd like to see added or subtracted, please let me know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we have the Southwest Water Annual Audit Report.
The, we provide this, just for communication, this is something that Southwest Water provides to us every year. It's not a document that I go through in detail, so if you have specific comments, I would encourage those to be made directly to Ms. Mary Massid. She is the executive director for Southwest Water, and is available to the commission for direct commentary or questions regarding the document itself.
Any questions on it? For Mr. Kessel? Okay, thank you, Mr. Kessel. The last report we have is a library expansion update from Library Director Anan. Welcome.
Thank you, President Decker, commissioners, for your time. So I wanted to come forward today and just make sure that you're up to date and abreast of the work the foundation's been doing, going forward with our planning for the library expansion and renovation. We did have five different companies that gave us proposals for architectural services, that's for our planning and concept drawing phase of the project, if you will. The committee that was put together reviewed those. That committee was composed of the president and treasurer of the foundation board, president and vice president of the library board, building official Schwint, assistant city engineer Marshick, myself, and the assistant library director Newton. We reviewed those, invited three different companies to come and interview with us. At the end of that day, it was the unanimous agreement of that committee that we would like to pursue a contract with Bartlett &amp; West. And I would like you to know that the foundation board has also voted to approve that. Several thoughts that went into that when we were selecting, then we did have three great presentations actually on that day, and a lot of discussion before the decision was made. But Bartlett &amp; West has, is bringing two architects that have both worked on successful completed library projects, both new library buildings and expansions. In particular, one of them has also worked on a library project in Lawrence, Kansas, actually, that included a lot of thought for outside programming as well. This company has a really great understanding of historical buildings, has done a lot of work with them, talked very much about how you add to one of those buildings in a way that makes sense, and makes sense with the site, with the history of the building itself, in consideration of the larger community, downtown, et cetera. So we're excited about working with them, and as next steps, what we are looking forward to doing is working with them on a contract which we would bring to all of you and ask for your review and approval. You have any questions?
Any questions for...
What kind of timeframe are you looking at as a board, do you think?
As a board, we're hoping that we would be doing much of this work during the summer. So we are looking at doing some public forums, of course, and other ways of letting the community help guide us in our vision of what we want that expansion to look like, and include, we will be doing some staff workshops and other things of that nature. I certainly hope that all of you will share whatever thoughts that you have. And so sometime in the fall, perhaps, having a preliminary plan and some concept drawings ready to consider possible project approval and fundraising efforts and those kinds of things.
Ms. Anan, the used bookstore that's on the corner?
Yes.
Do you run that?
The Friends of the Library.
Okay, Friends of the Library, okay. I was just wondering if that's going to be incorporated, or part of the library project, or...
I'm hoping so.
Okay.
Many libraries do that. I'd like to see them in, under the umbrella, if you will, like many of the other things we've been talking about with this project. I'd like to see them functioning in a space that was designed for what they're trying to do there, in a space where people are coming in from the public to shop, and there are public restrooms available, which there are not, possibly coffee, some other things. So yes, that is something we're hoping for in the plans.
And the funding on this project for the expansion, and could you just describe to the public the funding options that you have in place for the expansion?
Well, the foundation board actually does have some funds already in the bank. We anticipate that we will be doing some fundraising. It's difficult to do that without something to show people, okay, this is what we're talking about. That's part of why we need to get that architect on board and help us show what the vision is in a way that people can connect with. We'll certainly present that information to you and some of the county commissions, and see where we go.
So there is an expectation of funding from the city and the county?
There's the expectation that we will ask for it.
Okay. That's fair enough.
Commissioner President Decker, just as a reminder, you, as a commission, voted to...
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to remind the public.
And when we do bring the contract forward for your consideration, we will be also asking you to consider how much or any of the funds for that contract could come from that set aside money.
Any further questions for Ms. Anan? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do have a 5 o'clock timetable, and the rezoning petition for Great Lakes first subdivision, and that will be presented by Mr. Hadley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This Great Lakes subdivision is a one-lot zone change that was missed in last month's reading. This is the first reading. It's from L.I. to G.I. for a five-acre parcel, a parcel that someone is planning to build a electrical contracting outfit on. There wasn't anybody in the audience opposed to this particular application, and staff in the planning commission would recommend approval of this first reading.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hadley. This is... This is ordinance 1655. 1655, and this is the first reading. So unless there's some immediate questions from Mr. Hadley, from the Commissioners, I will open up the public hearing. If there's anyone from the public that wish to come forward in support or against the subdivision, 1650, in ordinance 1655, please come forward, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Seeing no one from the public, we'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, questions, comments on the subdivision?
Mr. President, if I could, it's a zone change, it's a zone change.
Okay, zoning change.
L.I., to G.I.
Okay.
Hopefully I didn't say subdivision.
Nope.
I would make a motion to approve first reading of the ordinance.
Second. We have a motion to approve the rezoning for Great Lakes First Subdivision with a second. Any further questions, comments? Not, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Ms. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. First reading of ordinance 1655 is passed. We have a proposed lupo zone change within their subdivision. Mr. Hadley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This zone change will allow the lupo subdivision to actually take place. They went through a preliminary plot already. This zone changes from ag to rural residential. It's a seven-acre site, it's within the ETZ. Went through, without any opposition, through the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission and staff would recommend approval of this ordinance as well.
Okay, any questions for Planning Director Hadley? This is the first reading of 1656, so if there's anyone from the public that has any comments or against the zone change that allows this to become a subdivision, please come forward. State your name for the commission. Seeing no one from the public, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions or comments on 1656?
Mr. President, I would move to approve the first reading of ordinance number 1656.
We have a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 1656.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion? Not, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The first reading of ordinance 1656 is passed. We have a couple of minutes here, I guess we can get started with Mr. Kubis. He has a report for us, upcoming capital improvement projects.
Thank you, Commission President Decker and Commissioners. Construction season came upon us quickly this year. It seemed as winter was never going to end, and then all of a sudden, we were scheduling pre-construction meetings. So it happened pretty quick and it actually started last week. And the first slide I have, and this is probably all we'll get through before the next timetable, is a project on River Drive. And this project has been in the makings for a number of years now. We signed a development agreement with Riverfront North Dakota LLC back in 2015. Obviously, the market changed in 2015, as things are picking back up again. They are completing this project as required by their development agreement. So the green line is what they're constructing right now. If you're familiar with River Drive in the southeast part of town, it's just kind of some asphalt in the prairie right now. And they are reconstructing that street to our full urban standards, curb and gutter, lighting, new pavement. The water and sewer were there already, so they're extending services to the lots. Right now, the project is closed to through traffic. There are a few houses on River Drive right now, and then a few houses just to the west of River Drive that are having access maintained for them. But for the general public, the line in red to the south is not Sixth Street Southeast, it's Fifth Street Southeast, is gravelled now and will be maintained through the duration of the construction as a temporary bypass. So right now, traffic's moving through. I believe they have all the services in, and the completion date is estimated at mid-July, hopefully even before then, so...
Thank you, Mr. Kubis. We have the 505, so we'll just jump into that. And our 505 timetable agenda is a special use permit for pet daycare, and this is a consideration to approve a resolution. And Mr. Hadley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This particular application is for the Happy Hounds operation that I believe everyone's familiar with. It is the first, obviously, application through our new pet daycare ordinance that has gone through the process. The Happy Hounds folks did amend and have met all the conditions of approval for the new ordinance. There's also only two conditions that are requested in the condition of use permit. The Planning Commission and the public didn't have any comments or negative comments on it, and staff would recommend approval, final approval of this resolution.
It would be 12/2018.
Okay. So we have before us Resolution 12/2018 with a recommendation from staff to approve. Any questions from Commissioners? For Mr. Hadley?
I'd make a motion to approve 12/2018? Correct. Second that?
We have a motion to approve with a second. Any further questions or comments? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Resolution 12/2018 is approved. Okay, we can go back to Mr. Kubis.
Thank you. Jumping back into a project update, the next project on the list is our Eighth Street South Project. As you recall, this was a project funded with our North Dakota DOT Urban Roads funding. On the map, we have two different colors on there, so this project extends on both sides of Highway 22 from Second Avenue southwest to Sixth Avenue southeast. On the left, the orange part of it is going to be finished off in concrete to match what's already there on Eighth Street southeast, that would be concrete. On the right-hand side or the east side of Highway 22 will be done in asphalt. They have given us a start date of May 4th. That works, there we go, thank you. They have given us a start date of May 4th. I just heard today that that may be moved up to May 3rd, which would be in just a couple of days. So as far as impact to the public, we'll have phased construction of this. If you remember how the Museum Drive project went a couple of years ago, basically doing one side of the road at a time. So the north side will be done, then the south side, or vice versa. So traffic could be maintained through the project. We anticipate a lot of people will avoid Eighth Street, if at all possible, during the construction because it will still be through a construction site. We have some water main that's going in as well, so there'll be some temporary water services to folks. And that water main is kind of in the western half of the project, from First Avenue southwest to Fourth Avenue southeast. So there'll be some temporary water shut-offs, we're thinking in a few hours' time, and then there'll be temporary water services hooked up to those homes. Again, this project's going to start very soon. The contract completion date is October. The contractor has given us their scheduled completion date of the end of August, and the contractor on this one is Northern Improvement. The next project is our 2018 Mill and Overlay Project. We bid this last month, or, yeah, last month now, in April. We do not have a scheduled start date yet for this, but the project, as all our Mill and Overlay projects are, we take a little bit of the top surfacing of the asphalt off, overlay the entire roadway with a thin lift, inch and a half of new asphalt, and then do minimal concrete work, but most of the intersections, the corners, get redone and put in the new ADA ramps. So this area is going to be, again, we spoke about it, around the area of the old hospital from Sixth Street to Ninth Street. Again, we don't have a schedule on it, but the completion date will be October of this year. And that, again, was Northern Improvement doing that project. The next project is our trail project, again, bid in April, excuse me, this was bid in November. We don't have a hard start date, but we've been verbally told after the Fourth of July, this project will start. Should have very minimal impacts to the traveling public, although we do cross a few streets along 21st Street on the north and 10th Avenue East to the east. So there'll be some times where traffic might have to be flagged through the project, but we anticipate those impacts to be minimal. I just wanted to point out, we do have a little strip in the corner that we hear comments about. We paved it last year as a temporary trail, about 1,000 feet or so. But when you put the green line and the red line together, the red is already in place as a 10-foot path, and then our project is in green, we'll really have a really nice loop there of two and two-thirds miles. So really what the Park District is looking for is to have these looped areas where people don't have to walk to the end of a block and come right back. So this will be a nice addition to our trail system. The next project is our 2018 Seal Coat Project, again, on a lot of the major streets that we've paved recently. It hasn't bid yet, it'll bid in 10 days on May 11th, and the contract completion date will be September 1. All DOT Seal Coat projects are completion date of September 1. So we anticipate that project will probably start late, it'll start mid-August, it won't take very long. But the people whose neighborhoods we've seal-coated in the past couple of years, they are familiar with the routine, they're, you know, they're an inconvenience for a short while, and then you have the loose chips on the road for a short while, but they do happen real quickly. If you go to work, your street might be done by the time you get back from work that day. So they move along quickly. We'll keep you updated as to when and who that contractor will be. I did fail to mention that the trail project, again, just for the record, is wind construction doing the work on that project. And then just some other miscellaneous projects that we have going or have heard will be going in town this year. On the Prairie Creek Edition, and for reference, that's around the Crossing Steakhouse, they're adding their streetlights this year to that project, so that should be completely finished this year. Cook Metal Hills Fifth, North State Avenue, but on the west side of State Avenue, there's new streets, new streetlights up there. There are streets that are yet to be paved and some utilities to be added, and so we've just heard recently that that's the intent of the developer to finish out Cook's Fifth, which would really about, I want to say, double the size of what's built right now. So it'd add quite a few buildable lots to the inventory that we talked about at Planning and Zoning last meeting. The Dickinson Hills subdivision, which is just west of the West Business Loop, we have had discussions with that developer this spring. They do have plans to move forward. Whether that materializes or not, we haven't heard, but they would, their project would essentially build out Fairway Street for another 1,000 feet or so and add some water and sewer. Our sidewalk improvement project for 2018, we've had several applicants already. Like we've talked, our focus is going to be on tackling city-owned property that's less sidewalk right now, so we'll be adding a lot of sidewalk to our city property. And wind construction is the contractor on that as well, and we anticipate that to be starting soon. We try and wrap that up a little bit earlier, towards the end of August, so we can get those specials on the books and to the county. In general, I would say, and I think Mr. Hadley and Mr. Schwint would agree, that there's definitely an increased interest in development. Some of this hasn't materialized yet, but there's a lot more traffic in City Hall, so it's a good thing. With that, I'd stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Kubis. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Public Works, and the first item up in Public Works tonight is a potable fill station, and Water Utilities Manager Balostaros is...
Close enough.
Close enough.
Mr. President, members of the commission, I stand for you today for the consideration to approve a project vote for a potable fill station. We currently have a potable fill station on Broadway, and it hasn't been working for approximately a month. We sell water out of this fill station at $29 for 1,000 gallons. This water is used for everything from fracking, water hauling, anybody who's doing any chemical application or anything, to mix that with it. On the proposed project we're looking for is, it's going to be a turnkey project, it's a package system. The system would have a credit card reader, and then also on the other side, it would be able to have a digital input where, from a remote location, say, Public Works are here at City Hall, we'd be able to assign someone a number based on that. They would be able to enter that number in. If an employee left or something, we could cancel that. Currently, we have to manually issue a card, collect the card when that account is closed or manually close that account, so it's difficult at the moment. And we're expecting the total project cost to be approximately $75,000, and we will use water distribution funds, cash reserve for this project. The next slide, please. This will replace the existing cash water vendor, also on the south side of Broadway. That's the only water vendor we currently have operational, and that sells water just based on coin operation. It's difficult for us to operate that. We have to collect the cash, take it to the bank, it has to be double-counted with somebody, and so it's a long process for our water operators when they should be doing water operations instead of counting currency, taking it to the bank, verifying those accounts. So this is the system that we're proposing here, would have a keypad on one side and then also a credit card reader on the other side. So it would have a pay-by system, we would be able to do accounts payable, that would go to accounting, and we'd be able to receive the monies from that. Thank you for consideration, and staff recommends approval for this project. Motion to approve or deny the purchase of the potable fill station expenditures not to exceed $75,000, and I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from staff? Or from Commissioners?
How long will this take to get installed and up and running?
I think the turnkey, they estimate it's going to be six to eight weeks, so it would take a little while to get that in there. We've talked to our IT here about the integration for that, and I don't think it would be a problem. Also, Public Works Director Zurov has also dealt with the same water system in Glendive, and he was pretty happy with it there. We've looked into it, and they have a very good track record also.
And could you give the public an idea of what we generate in water sales?
Well, currently zero because it's not operational, so in the past, it's been up to a million dollars in, I want to say, 2014, so it just depends on who's using that water. So it can be anywhere from, I think last year's maybe in $200,000 range to anywhere to a million dollars to zero at the moment, which we're not liking, so certainly appreciate your approval on this project.
Mr. Kessel? Mr. Balostaros, can you...
Yes, sir.
...talk a little bit more specifically about location and where the existing water vendor is that it will be replacing?
Yes, sir. On the south side of Broadway is where the old Public Works building is at, that's where our coin-operated water vendor is at. Directly on the north side of Broadway is where the, this fill station is at. The implementation of this fill station, it would have dual-side loading. Currently, we only have single-side loading on the north Broadway fill station. It would also eliminate the fill station of the coin-operated vendor on the south side of Broadway. I think there's a process for Southwest Water also obtaining that building, so there could be, in the very near future, we could even lose that possibility of selling water there. So it'd be a double-sided loadout where the old Public Works building, and I think the address is 633 West Broadway, somewhere around there.
Any other questions for Mr. Balostaros? Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Commissioners, I'd look for a motion on this...
Mr. President, I would move to approve the purchase of the potable fill station and the expenditures for the project not to exceed $75,000.
We have a motion with parameters, I guess. $75,000, is that what you said?
Yeah, that's in the memo.
That's what you requested.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion?
You said the funds are coming out of here? You've got the funds already available for this?
Yes, they'll come out of the cash for water, pardon.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Not, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much. I also have the next item on the agenda, but we've actually been looking at the MITCO diving agreement.
I think that was pulled.
Yes, and it was pulled from the agenda, so I just wanted to make sure to clarify that. Thank you again for your time.
And the next thing up is we have a GT Architect for Cold Storage Contract. And the next thing up is we have a GT Architect for Cold Storage Contract, and we have Solid Waste Manager Prowse here for this.
Good evening, Mr. President Decker and Commissioners. I'm here to present an agreement with you from GT Architects for design and project administration of a cold storage building located at the Solid Waste Department. The building will be used to supply additional containers, supplies, and equipment. The agreement does include services from civil and structural firms. The compensation is not to exceed $29,200, and it is an approved 2018 capital purchase or capital project. These funds will be taken out of the approved budget item and use of cash.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prowse. Any questions for Mr. Prowse on this cold storage contract?
Mr. President, I'd like to just offer just one point of clarification. Just so you're aware, upon, what I'm viewing is this, the contract that is linked to this agenda item is the current contract, but on the past agenda item, there was a prior version of this contract also linked. So there was a minor difference in that the version that you'd be approving does not, provides that you would reimburse the architect for expenses without any interest, whereas the prior version of the contract provided for interest. So in the event that you see two versions, it's the one that where no reimbursement with additional interest would be the one up for approval.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Murtha. Any, Mr. Kessel?
Mr. Prowse, can you share the location of where you intend to build this structure?
The structure would be built to the north of the Solid Waste Transfer Station. We do own the property all the way to the drainway. It would be within our fence or in our boundary. There's an outside row of trees that are there right now, and then it would be just directly between our current structure and that row of trees.
Any other questions for Mr. Prowse? Not, I would look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve the contract with GT Architects.
Second.
A second. Any further questions, comments? Not will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Prowse, we still have you up here. Yesterday started new hours for Baylor Building landfill.
Correct. The new hours of the Baylor Building landfill did start yesterday. The Baylor Building now is open from 7:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and 8 till 2 on Saturdays. The landfill will be 7:30 to 4:00, Monday through Friday, and the Baylor, or, the landfill will be 7:30 to 4:00, Monday through Friday, and from 8 to 1:00 on Saturday. And also a second clarification, because it's coming quick, as Mr. Kubis stated earlier, spring came upon really quickly, is May 14th, the rearload route does come to an end. So I am already working with Deputy Administrator Carlson on how we're going to continue to pursue and charge residents for the use of that service if they request it.
And Mr. Prowse, since we have you up here, do you want to speak about the electronic recycling event that we are having?
I can, but I don't remember the dates. I believe it's May 11th and 12th. It's Saturday and, Friday and Saturday.
And what kind of items can people bring there that they might find use?
All types of electronic waste, so therefore, computers, printers, monitors, TVs, console TVs, laptops, cell phones, any form of electronic device can be taken to the Baylor Building. May 11th and 12th, it's our electronics, we e-waste days. Again, it's our second year now that we're going to co-partner with North Dakota E-Waste out of Bismarck, North Dakota. They're doing the collections. There are some fees that are associated with those materials, but it's all ran through those. All the city does is provides a location for them to provide this service. They also are collecting household-type batteries, lithium-ion batteries, and fluorescent bulbs and tubes and such like that.
Thank you.
If you stay tuned to the Dickinson Press, there will be a fee schedule posted as to what the fees are and what they charge. And if there's any city entities that are willing to participate and there's fees associated, they will waive a 20% discount.
Thank you, Mr. Prowse.
Thank you.
Move on to planning, and we have Planning Director Hadley. We have our final plat.
Thank you, Mr. President. First one is Skylark Meadow Subdivision. It's an 18-acre parcel along the US 10 and the ETZ. It's just west of 114th. It's a, basically just at this point, a single-family residential lot at this point. They initially were looking at dividing up more lots, but right now, it's just creating one single-family residential lot of 18 acres. The Planning Commission heard this item, and staff in the Planning Commission would recommend approval of this resolution for the final plat.
Okay, any questions for Planning Director Hadley? This is Resolution 132018. So I would look for a motion on 132018.
Would you approve, Mr. President?
Second.
A motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Not will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Resolution 132018 is approved. Next item up is Worthington Subdivision. Mr. Hadley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is another one-lot, large subdivision, 16 acres in size. It's a Worthington site. Used to be the old Stufus site, where the tanks south of 20th Street southwest, south of town, it's also in the ETZ. This item was also heard by the Planning Commission, and there wasn't any major issues with it. There will be a development agreement that follows up after, if final approval is given to this, that comes before you, possibly at the next meeting. The Planning Commission and staff would recommend approval of this resolution as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley on the Worthington Subdivision? This is Resolution 142018.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
A motion to approve?
Second.
For the second. Any further discussion or questions for staff? Not will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Trustum?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum, excuse me. Chair votes aye. Resolution 142018 is approved. Next up, we have Building and Code Enforcement, Mr. Schwint.
President Decker, Commissioners, Building Safety Month is a public awareness campaign celebrated by jurisdictions worldwide during the month of May for the past 38 years to help individuals, families, and business understand what it takes to create safe and sustainable structures. The campaign reinforces the need for adoption of modern, regularly updated building codes, a strong and efficient system of code enforcement, and well-trained professional workforce to maintain the system. Our communities need building codes to protect the citizens from disasters like fires, weather-related events, and structural collapse. Building codes are society's best way of protecting homes, offices, schools, manufacturing facilities, stores, and entertainment venues. Code officials work day in and day out to keep the public safe. The campaign is presented by the International Code Council and its 64,000 members worldwide, along with a diverse partnership of professionals from the building, construction, design, and safety communities. Corporations, government agencies, professional associations, nonprofits, and more come together to support BSM because they understand the need for safe and sustainable structures where we live, work, and play. Last week, I was asked by Mr. Kessel to speak in front of Rotary, so we kind of kicked it off there. We have planned to meet with area home builders to do essentially a spring seminar. We have spoken to Dickinson High School, the Building Trades Department, to speak with that class there also. If you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Schwint?
President Decker, I don't have a question, but I would just like to say thank you to Building Official Schwint, Chief Dossinger, Chief Seavock, and to President Decker for speaking at Rotary. We had Municipal Month this month since I was the program chair. They all made presentations. They all did a very nice job, so thank you for doing that.
I think there was pretty good turnout for all four.
There was, and there was good questions, too. Mr. Schwint had about a 10-minute presentation and 20 minutes of questions.
That's great. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Schwint? Not, we'll move on to Item 10, which is the Public Issues of City Concern, not on the agenda. If you're a member of the public and you wish to come forward and state a public issue of city concern that has not been on the agenda this evening, please come forward, state your name, and let us hear about your issue. Seeing no one from the public, we'll close the Issues of City Concern part of our agenda, and we'll move on to Item 11, which is Commission. And the first item up, we have an appointment of the interim city administrator, and helping us with this will be City Attorney Murtha.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the Commission, before I get into this specific item that is listed here, you'll know that there are five general topics to be discussed under here. The difficulty with this discussion is that several of these topics interrelate with each other. And I do not want the Commission to feel bound by the description provided that you can't move from one to two and have those items interact. So please feel free to do so, and to that end, because they are all relevant to one another, to that end, what I'd like to do is initially provide you with a general overview of how these items might relate to each other, or why they might be pertinent to the discussion one to the next, and for the benefit of the public and anyone watching, provide a brief background as to what transpired at the special commission meeting where the transition issues first were discussed. So if I may, at the last special meeting, the Commission accepted Mr. Kessel's resignation, however, did not set a specific date of separation. That was deferred until this meeting. And the Commission also reviewed possible scenarios for interim coverage for the city administrator duties and asked that between the last meeting and today, if anyone was interested in filling that role or fulfilling a joint role, should the Commission go in that direction, that they should submit letters of interest, with the exception of Deputy City Administrator Carlson, that if it be at a single or dual role, that she would be participating and be filling, and be filling some of the city administrator duties during the interim, if not all of them. So that was the focus for the first item, and since that time, you have received three letters from executive team members, two expressing interest, one, I believe, I would, I believe it to that individual to say that in interest, however, in the conditions may not be right for filling an interim role at this time. And those letters have been provided to Commissioners. You are free to ask the individuals to step up to the podium and provide their input, or free to initiate a discussion about that scenario and proceed how you wish. The purpose of Item Number Two, the Job Description Discussion, those job descriptions were also part of the interim discussion that was had at the special meeting. The reason that those were provided and relevant for this discussion is, we thought it would be helpful for you to see and have before you how we've defined that city administrator role, and that may guide how you decide to move forward in the interim and in the long term. There was not an intent for you to review and change the job descriptions today, but they are relevant to the discussion because you can see what the expectations are for this person. And the Deputy City Administrator job descriptions were likewise provided because it's hard to see the complete picture of where certain duties have been delegated without also having those provided. In addition, Commission members, you've been provided with certain sections of the city code and of state law that generally pertain to city administrator duties and their coverage. The Transition Committee scope, at the interim meeting, you suggested that it would be appropriate and appointing individuals to participate in a transition subcommittee of the City Commission. One of the things that I have seen transition committees deal with is identifying and redefining the job description. So again, that would be part of, that job description discussion could be part of Item Number Three. The Transition Planning Cost Analysis information relates both to setting the date of separation for Mr. Kessel, as well as potentially the cost of retaining a search firm and going forward. So again, that discussion is interrelated with the other. And then a draft separation agreement, the provisions of which will be dependent upon your decisions in Items One through Four. So that is the umbrella of the discussion. And then I would just, moving forward with Number One, ask the Commission their preference on, would you like to start with a discussion, or would you like to hear from the individuals who've provided you with letters?
Commissioners, I guess personally, I am very pleased that there's interest within the city, that there are people that are willing to step up. But my personal feelings are this. We hired a Deputy City Administrator just for this purpose, this sole purpose, that in case this day did come, that if Mr. Kessel would be moving on, or if something happened to Mr. Kessel, or he was incapacitated, that we have somebody to step up. And when we interviewed Mrs. Carlson, we put our faith in her to do that. And while I welcome the interest from the other members of the executive team, I look at it as, this is the reason we hired her. And I have full faith in Mrs. Carlson fulfilling these duties until we find a full-time city administrator. Now, if Commissioners wish to go in a different direction, I, you know, for me, I'd like to hear your opinions.
I would echo those sentiments. I'd take them a step further, that the letters that were forwarded to us, although there was an indication of interest, what it really showed me is that the executive team is rallying behind Mrs. Carlson, and to me, the letters showed more support in wanting to step up and help if any issues would arise that you couldn't get to, that the team came together as a consensus and said, "We support you, we want you, this is why you were hired, but we're all willing to step in at a moment's notice at your beck and to do whatever needs to be done during the transition." And that's the feeling that I got, is that, again, that's why we hired you, is if this day would ever come. I think what I enjoy most is seeing members of the executive team step out of their comfort zone and say, "Here's what we're willing to do to help in this transition."
I would agree.
I would.
And, you know, I would just add to that and say, we quite often hear Mr. Kessel talk about the strength and unity within City Hall and especially within the executive and leadership team, and I think this just exhibits it even more that we have people that are willing to go above and beyond. And I don't think that it was just the people that threw their hat in. I think we would have been, you know, we're lucky to have all of them.
We are.
And I would absolutely agree in the direction that you're looking to take.
That makes three. I have total faith in Ms. Carlson. I have total faith in our executive team. I think they've been put together over the years and have provided a very stable, you know, situation for us here, and I think it looks like, you know, the three people that were interested will be, you know, a central backbone in helping her to this time, and I feel confident that we're in good hands, so.
So, Mrs. Murtha, do we need to craft a resolution or just a motion to appoint?
Given that we will have one more commission meeting prior to whatever Mr. Kessel's departure date may be, I think to be able to phrase it as you wish, I would just ask between now and the next meeting, we'll put it on the agenda as a motion to move forward with Deputy City Administrator Carlson in the interim, and then we'll be able to provide, depending upon your decision... upon your decisions today, be able to provide a timeframe of when that interim should begin, and also allow you to have at that meeting a discussion with regards to, as was brought up at the last meeting, a discussion with regards to about whether there should be recognition for the additional duties in the form of compensation, and how that, and how that may take place.
Okay, perfect. So moving on to item two, the job description discussion. Commissioners, if you looked over the discussion, is there any items that we need to change before we advertise this? I know at one point, a lot of this was written, because Mr. Kessel had to do, wear many hats. And my only question to some of this job description, and I guess I could address Mrs. Nomenek or, or HR department, is, is there certain wa, a certain weight to each in the overall, when we pick out the pay for that individual, is, is, is it weight, the weight given to each category there for a specific reason, or is it, it was just because you were wearing a lot of hats and they had to split up 10 items, and, you know, some got 5%, some got 10%, and, you know, which I, the most critical one that I, I feel on here is, in the city administrator's job description, is, is the very first item, and, let me get to it, the, the direct daily administration of the city. So, and right now, we have a weight of 25% on that. So as you look through all the other categories, do we need to adjust some of that, because now we do have a full human resource staff? I mean, we have our financial staff, a full financial staff, so do we need to move some of that around? Does that affect the, the pay because we're doing that? So I guess that would be questions for Mrs. Nomenek, and yourself, and Mrs. Carlson.
And another, if I may, Mr. President, members of the commission, another item for the commission's consideration is whether or not you want to, there's a lot of detail in these job descriptions, and whether or not you would like the job descriptions to be reviewed by a transition committee with recommendations on changes brought back before the full commission, which I think is entirely appropriate, the full commission decides on, on what they are, or if that's something that you want to have full commission participation in from the beginning. Because I do agree, the current, the current categories aren't, especially given the deputy city administrator job descriptions, are not reflective of the current status.
Mr. President, once we make changes on here, it does have to go through civil service, doesn't it?
I believe that's been changed, and I'm, I'm looking to Ms. Nomenek in, in the background, but, and if, if you wouldn't mind stepping up to comment, since you, since she was very much involved in the change of the manual, but I believe it's now to the full commission's discretion.
Good evening, Mr. President, commissioners. That is correct. We did make a change to our manual, and it does not need to go through civil service to make a change to the job description unless it were changing a pay grade, or if it were a new job description, then it would go up. Even then, I guess it doesn't even need to go to, to them, just to commission.
Thank you. Mr. President, I would, I would advocate for maybe you and Mr. Kessel, and maybe the transition team to sit down and really look at these job descriptions line by line. I think we could sit here for quite a while and go through these, but I have full faith that you guys, or that transition committee, will have the time and be able to get it done.
I think so too. You know, they're, the transition team and the staff are the ones that live with the administrator.
Right.
We, we come in and, and we deal with, but it's not our day-to-day activity. I feel confident in the staff and the team to come forward with the recommendation, with your input along the way, and then bring it before the commission and let us.
So I think that's the direction we'll go. We'll, we'll get the transition committee together, and we'll look at this. And I guess that goes into three, which is the scope of their work.
Yes. And if I, if I may, Mr. President, members of the commission, this, this, at the last meeting, you did appoint members of the transition committee. You are free to add members now, or open it, open it back up as you see fit, but one of the things that I would recommend in addition to the job description is, if you decide to use a search firm, then, for example, details about the RFP for the search firm and things like that, again, everything is brought back to the commission for approval and discussion, but working through those details could be done at the transition committee. But your, your next item, number four, is an example of, are you interested in pursuing a search firm? If so, via direct hire, or via an RFP process, because that would affect what your, what your transition committee does.
Well, we, we had one example sent to us for cost, and there was another firm that was interested that emailed me directly. So I guess they're both within about $5,000 to $10,000 of each other, so I don't think it's a bad idea if the transition committee goes ahead and issues a, you know, an RFP or RFQ for the, a search firm, unless we don't want to use a search firm.
My only concern is, what's the timing? By the time we draft an RFQ or RFP, get it out there, get it back, grade it, hire?
Could, could be six to eight months.
Yeah, I would say.
I have some concerns with, you know, with that kind of timing.
I do too, and, and, you know, I generally don't go this direction, but we have a firm that proved very well for us. That's how we got Mrs. Carlson. She's part of the transition team, so I think that having a firm that you're familiar with, and that you know the process that they went through to find you, and then speaking to Commissioner Friedrich's concern of timeframe, I, I think that it would be money well spent to go with someone that has a proven track record, and that can hit the ground running, and that we can make this transition as quickly as possible. And for the sake of $5,000 or $10,000, but to drag it out for even three to six months, I don't think we're spending our money wisely when we have somebody onboard that, that can do the job right away.
I, I tend to agree with that. I, I, like I said, I'm just a little concerned. I mean, we're probably 60 days away from Mr. Kessel departing, and do we want to be six months out before we get our first applicant, our first resumes in on this thing?
I think we're a little bit closer than 60 days.
Anyway, whatever it is, but, yeah, less than 60, but, I mean, that's just my only, that's my thoughts, is just the time.
And valid concerns. And we do have a, a search firm that we're comfortable with, and.
And I got to sit in at, at the tail end and meet with the candidates that they had pulled together, and they did a really good job. You and I got to go out on that, and it was a great opportunity to meet the candidates, and it really did help solidify that you were the right person after getting to meet with you in more of a casual setting. It, it just really did bode well for making that final decision. I think that firm did a wonderful job.
So, Mrs. Murtha, if we do, would decide tonight to hire this firm, straight up, as the commission has, basically, they're leaning towards, do we need to have some language crafted, or maybe the next meeting?
Yes, so I, what I would suggest is the, the communication between that search firm and, and city hall has been informal. Would you be available to do the work? And it, there's not been a specific, here's a contract for the work with regards to this exchange, and I, and I would also possibly discuss with them the, the idea that it's very difficult to do a search without a final job description, because you're, you're not sure who you're searching for.
Right.
But these search firms can help with development of that job description, so we could include that within the scope of service as well.
Right.
So between now and the next meeting, I believe we can reach out and, and request that they provide a formal, formal contract for review and, and for you.
And, you know, just to touch on that, it was pretty impressive when they talked about their reach. I don't know where it was listed, but it was, do you know how many thousands of people it reaches? He added that in there.
Commissioner Trustam, I don't remember the exact number, but I, I have worked with Colin Basinger before, and he's quite good at what he does. In fact, when we were searching for Ms. Carlson, I actually distributed some of the brochures that he created while I was at an ICMA conference. So he reaches thousands.
13,400, so that's pretty impressive when you're looking for strong candidates.
Okay, so the direction I guess we'll look at is, is crafting a contract, or you can contact them, Colin, and, and go ahead with setting up the, the scope of work and a, and a contract to bring back to us in two weeks. So we can go that route, and expedite this.
Absolutely. And, and, did you have another comment on that?
I was only going to comment that in order to do that, you have to get that job description done, or at least a start.
Well, they could be part of that, the part of the scope of the work.
They can, they can provide input in a, not do it for, you know, obviously, but provide input.
Provide some input.
Yeah.
And that might adjust his initial, the initial quota a little up, though. Yeah, I, I would assume it would go up. I don't think we'd get a discount for asking for more work, so.
The, it also, my expedite finalization of the job description.
Yes.
And then they, the other item under the transition planning cost would be finalizing Mr. Kessel's separation date. And you've been provided information, and I, and I would defer to, exact numbers, I'm deferring to Deputy City Administrator Carlson with regards to the numbers, about the cost to the city, were the date to be May 31st, or a date in June? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, commission. Worksheet was given to you, and on the cost analysis on the employer's side of it, and the thing that I want to bring up is that salary is paid on a, two times during the month, the 15th and 31st. In my cost analysis, I used the last date of May, which is May 31st, for my breakdown of what it would cost on that, and it would be the regular salary for Mr. Kessel, and then his payout, which would, would be his vacation and sick pay, and then it would be a close to around $75,000 on that. On the, on the interim of being on the 31st, you also have the benefits, and the benefits is being your insurance and things, and being that we pay on, pre of our medical, that way if Mr. Kessel comes out and gets paid out on the 31st, his insurance would go till June 30th. So we always pay ahead on our medical, so he would have coverage till June 30th under our insurance program. On any dates as of coming out in June, the difference would be about $1,628 difference, which is actually the insurance being paid of the benefit of going one more month. Being that he would be paid out in June, that would extend his medical till July 30th or 31st. So that's, that's about the difference in either one of the pay dates of that. And is there any questions on that? That's more of a wrap-up of what it is.
Any questions for Mrs. Carlson? And, and Mr. Kessel, you, you had submitted a request during, for the, the special meeting to, to depart the, basically, June 1st, but May 31st, and that is, is still your intention, the request that you had submitted?
Yeah, the request I submitted was for June 1st or June 8th, but based on the review that Ms. Carlson did, I'm just fine with.
With May 31st, okay. I just wanted, you know, because of the day, it's one day, so make sure you're still.
Absolutely fine with that.
I suppose you had everything planned for June 1st.
That darn day is gonna.
It was gonna be your biggest day ever in your entire tenure.
It's a lot less than 60 days, though.
A lot less. We have 30.
Like 49.
So.
I'm comfortable with the May 31st date.
As am I.
I don't have any issue with it either.
I would agree.
So then we will have a.
Motion.
Yes. A motion to approve the separation date of 5/31/18.
I'd make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the separation date of 5/31/18 with a second. Any further discussion? Not will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Separation date is approved. And the, do we have to have a separate motion for the compensation, or that, well, that's pretty much set in stone?
It is set in stone.
Per, per contract, so.
Memorialized, yeah, no. Mr. President, members of the commission, if you would like me to move on to the last agenda item?
Okay.
And the, the reason why this was put at the end, and you were provided with a draft, fill-in-the-blank, basically, separation agreement, of what it might look like should you need one. And the, and the reason this was part of the discussion at the last meeting was in, in the event that there was anything such as use of vacation at the, at the end of the term, if that were to have happened, or do we need to, do we need to address the possibility of Mr. Kessel's participation in ongoing litigation that the city is currently in as, as a witness? Since that time, with the date of, of May 31st, there will not be any vacation use after the date of separation, and I did reach out to outside counsel on, on the litigation matters that Mr. Kessel may be involved in as a witness, and, and asked them their preferences with regards to making arrangements upfront, or in the event it comes up, and they expressed to me a, a preference of, of wait and see. We're still in the discovery and motion phase of the litigation. It would be, it would be, in their opinion, premature to start to talk about potential trial witness arrangements at this time. And so for those reasons, I, at this time, I would say there really isn't a, there really isn't a need for a separation agreement, because those type of issues have gone away, so to speak. However, it was still included for your reference, to see if it is something that you would like to do, it is here, and we can draft it.
Mrs. Murtha, if a separation agreement is not signed, and because we, at this time, don't see any for, you know, need, the need for any, I guess, the, an insurance policy, basically, what the agreement is for us, and something comes up litigation-wise, say, six to eight months from now, what, what, how do we remedy that situation?
We would reach out to Mr. Kessel at that time, and it would depend upon, it would depend upon the nature of the lawsuit and his, and the role he would play as a witness. So for example, he's already provided a deposition in one matter, and how, whether it was necessary to have that be live testimony. It's not uncommon for arrangements to be made when the need arises. A, trying to figure things out in advance is a nice thing to do, but it's definitely not, you know, the norm. The norm is, let's talk now, and depending on his location and what other obligations he has at the time, he, he may be more or less available, and that will affect any of those discussions anyway.
And, and some of the, some of the depositions can be taken by Skype, or, they do a lot of that nowadays, where there's no travel involved, so.
What is the, I mean, how do they compensate him? I mean, if we need him to testify, I mean, does the city have a set fee we pay, or how does that work?
By statute, there is a nominal witness fee of travel and. By statute, there is a nominal witness fee of travel and for fact witnesses, $25 a day, and he would be a fact witness. However, I have seen, I have seen entities for, you know, if you have a two-week trial and you're tying somebody up for a very long time. I've seen entities hire individuals back as a temporary employee because they are providing services that time. And so then there's a, there's a compensation. I've also seen variations in between that of, here's the flat fee for your assistance during this time in recognition of the time away from the job that they would otherwise be doing or just subpoenaing them and paying the witness fee.
So the cases we're involved in right now, we don't really see a situation right now that we might need him to testify at.
At this point in time.
I mean, it's not at that point in the lawsuit yet.
No, no.
Okay. Well, we have it on hand. And this, and that sums up our five topics for the transition.
For today, unless there are any other issues related to the transition, the commission would like to discuss.
And usually this block is empty. So this is for commissioners, if you have any other items that are not on the agenda, please bring them up at this time. Hearing nothing else, I would look for the motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second.
We adjourn.